This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, of course, that's interpretation of law.
Fifty-eight.
There you go.
Thank you.
Of course, there is.
Morning, Sheriff.
It's gonna take a half hour to find a question part.
Eight o'clock, and you call the meeting to order?
You draw me an pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance. Morning, everybody. I'll be sharing the meeting today as Chairman Ewing's voice has taken leave. It's also his seventieth birthday today. I'll spare this thing. We better let everybody know right off. Presenting for the agenda, is there any changes, Mr. Elk?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the agenda, second.
The motion to second to approve the agenda, all those favorites, aye. I oppose. Motion to carry. Any conflicts today? I need to approve the regular meeting minutes from October 22nd and the special meeting minutes from November 7th. I move approval of November 7th in.
So it'd be twelve minutes?
Second.
Second, not twelve minutes.
We had a motion to second to approve the October 22nd meeting minutes and the special November 7th meeting minutes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Now the bills.
May I have any questions answered?
Might I ask a run and answer?
Second.
A motion to second to pay the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Travel requests.
I have none, Chairman. Excuse me, step raise for Troy Thompson. Correction, Officer Two, Grade Three, Base Pay at twenty-five thirty-four, full-time permanent employee, effective eleven seventeen twenty twenty-four.
Should we do all those together?
I can. Step raise for Gabrielle Hoffman. Going, correction, Officer Two, Grade Three, Base Pay at twenty-five thirty-four, full-time permanent employee, effective eleven seventeen twenty-four. Mackenzie Gerald, Dispatcher One, Grade Three, Base Permanent, or is a part-time fill-in, employee at a base pay at twenty-three eighty-six, effective eleven three.
Those three, once, not any higher separate. Motion to approve these step raises.
Second.
These are budgeted items, correct? Yeah, motion to second to approve step raises for the three individuals. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried.
We have a new hire, Marshall Rodd. He is a correction officer one, Grade One, Base Pay of twenty-two ninety-three, effective eleven twelve. And Devin Torgerson, correction officer one, Grade Two, Base Pay at twenty-three thirty-nine, full-time permanent employee, eleven, effective eleven twelve.
I move approval of Marshall Root and Devin Torgerson as new employees.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the two new hires in Sheriff's Department. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried.
Who was the second Chairman?
Mr. Sleep.
And then I have, this is Treasurer's Office, I have a step raise for Sarah Bailey, going to a county employee three, Grade Two, Base Pay at twenty-four ninety-two. She is a permanent, full-time employee, this is effective eleven eighteen twenty-four. And then Sharon Gupecia, and this actually is a classification change, she is going to a county employee two, Grade One, Base Pay at twenty-two seventy-eight, effective eleven eighteen twenty-four.
Motion to approve these step raises, both step raises and the classification change.
I'll second that. These are budgeted.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
So there's just one classification change and one step raise?
Correct.
They have marked this.
They have them all stamped.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried.
All I have, Chairman.
Okay. What would you discount with the treasurer?
This is October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, total amount of deposits in the bank says forty-three million, two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Included in that total is the Colliers CD for five million, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and seven cents. Bank balance of thirty-four million, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents. U.S. bank balance, two million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Money market, one million, five thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and one cent. Total amount of actual cash is one thousand, three hundred and fifty. Total amount of checks and drafts in treasurer's possession not exceeding three days, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and fifty-five cents. And cash, thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and ten cents. Petty cash, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, for a total of forty-four million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and ten cents.
Move up to, I want to add, there's a conflict with the treasurer.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve, you have to discount the treasurer. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried, budget supplement, M and P for mapping and preservation, no place kept. Travel in the sheriff's supplemental budget.
This is just a automatic supplement for three thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents to go into the sheriff's travel budget for, from insurance proceeds to repair of two thousand, nineteen Dodge Durango.
You just need a motion to approve that?
I move, second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget supplement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Now we have the fund transfer from the general fund to the M and P, the mapping preservation fund, in month twenty-six thousand, eight forty-eight, eighty-seven. And that's for taxes collected directly for that item, correct?
Yeah, so what this is, is back in twenty-three, September twenty-three, a motion was made to approve and authorize the VDA to sign the agreement between U.S. Imaging and Lawrence County in the amount of a hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. And at that time, there was only a hundred-and-eighteen thousand in that fund. And so, in order to pay the remaining of those bills, it was also discussed that they were going to use the remaining amount of funds and then to supplement the rest into that fund. And so this is just transferring twenty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents from the general fund to M and P fund, so she can pay the remainder of those bills. And then in twenty-five, it is actually budgeted for in the registered deeds fund.
And that's to make all the paper documents, electronics, so the preservation will be there. Excellent. So we need motion to approve that.
Yep.
So.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve that transfer to the M and P fund. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Resolution twenty-two four dash forty-one, a resolution providing for a full-time state's attorney.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a per country matter that according to state law, you have to enact every four years. Of course, we've had a full-time state's attorney, I think since around nineteen eighty-three, more or less. Looking for a motion, authorize Chairman to sign.
So.
Second.
Motion, second to allow the chairman to sign the resolution twenty-two four dash forty-one. Providing for a full-time state's attorney. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. We have our twenty-two five county commission meeting schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I present it for your consideration. You don't have to act on it today, but there's been some discussion, I've added some proposed alternative dates. I think you can see those marked in red. They would be first meeting in January, the first meeting in November.
And July?
Oh, and July too.
And the July, that's because of me also. And so I'm just gonna have to miss that meeting. I'll probably be gone that entire week. I think Monday, Friday are travel days for me. So, I would ask though, is if we could adjust the budgeting schedule to move that down a meeting, so we actually started the second, or the second meeting in July and then finished up the first meeting of August. It would seem to me that we kind of wrap that up by the end of July usually with two meetings and then we don't do much on August, so I hope there would be enough time we could address it that way. Then I could participate in the budgeting process.
Mr. Elk, do you see any issues?
I don't think statutorily that there's anything that says it has to be done then. I'm just looking to Brenda, sort of procedurally, you know, that's just sort of, I think she has to get all of her information together, does that make sense?
They have the provisional ballot, or ballot, sorry.
Budget?
Provisional budget. So.
Have any issues with any of the proposed changes?
I just have to be able to have time to publish it.
And that does give you enough time? What is the, you have to do it just any time in August?
Okay. Because you have your public hearing in September, so that gets the public chance to look at the provisional ballot, provisional budget prior to the public hearing on that first meeting in September, which is the second.
So that would make us having to approve the provisional budget August twelfth in order to get that done. We couldn't wait till that second meeting, so it just, give us a little more of a deadline if we did that. I would appreciate us being able to do that.
I'm willing to adopt that change.
I can throw another thing in there. You could, you could do budget on June twenty-fourth and July twenty-second as well.
Does that give the department heads enough time to get their budget to you? That's what I was.
Yeah, that's in the external elements involving that as well.
Or do that, usually that first Monday in June, so just puts a little more.
Okay.
So I mean, that's an option.
And then we still enjoy stress and deadlines.
Yeah.
We'd leave the July eighth meeting as the eighth.
Makes me drive.
You'd miss that when the weather went.
Correct.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's an option. I mean, I'd be willing to do that, just to preempt the August.
You'd rather do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Time to.
Yeah, that's perfectly satisfied.
Okay, so then the proposed meeting schedule would be what we have in front of us. The seventh would be moved to the sixth in January, July eighth would remain July eighth, and we go to November twelfth instead of November eleventh, because that's holiday. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, July, January sixth, and then everything else stays the same.
Yeah, we just start the budgeting process on the twenty-fourth. Okay.
Do you want to make that motion, Chairman, Mr. Sleep?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm willing to adopt the changes suggested.
Oh, second.
Got a motion, second to, about the draft county commission meeting schedule, discuss revisions. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Lewis, have you talked to these people on this schedule error of regular meetings? They're all willing to call another term.
For the committees. You know, Richard, I've talked to some folks, but I haven't dove into that a whole lot yet. I have had some interest already, though expressed. I think in the next two weeks, I'm gonna have the notices published in the Pioneer, so we'll start to fill that in over the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you.
If you know of anybody that's interested, you can certainly have them email me or contact me. Again, I've already started adding the list.
Well, I could look for some people if I knew there was some papers terms that were gonna expire, they already got the grade ready and saved.
Yeah, I think I've given you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a draft copy of what I have of openings and all the positions. It's a colored sheet of paper. It looks like, looks like this. I can show you after the meeting. I think you have that, and if you look at it, I think you can see what's open.
Okay.
Got any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, twenty-two five ambulance agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I have received one back so far, and it is the, we did wind behind the health agreement, I've been looking for authorization to have the chairman sign. No changes other than dates.
I just need a motion to allow. So yeah, the chairman to sign. I'll second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Raffle requests.
Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, as a letter, again, a annual letter submitted by Mr. Kenwood on behalf of the Spearfish Veterans Monument Committee. I think the details are self-explanatory. We're looking for a motion not to oppose authorizing the raffle.
Okay, the motion, the second to not oppose the raffle. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. And we're looking to request permission to close offices for the Christmas party on the seventeenth from noon to one-thirty.
As presented, Mr. Chairman, thankfully, the Equus Nation Office has stepped up and has agreed to sort of spearhead the Christmas party issue, or other offices that were busy doing other things. So we're thankful for their willingness to do that.
I'll move to close offices for the Christmas party.
Thanks, second.
Got a motion, two seconds to close the office for the Christmas party on the twenty-on the seventeenth from noon to one-thirty. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Sheriff Dean.
Eighteen fifteen. Morning. The first link to draw your attention to is what's known as change order number five in regards to our public service. First, two things that I would ask you to consider. First one is the monetary amount, and the second is the date, or specifically the requested days that are in addition to the change, each individual change. And so, what I can tell you at this point is that the change order has been reviewed by your finance committee. And we are all in agreement that this is the proper move for Lawrence County in terms of the monetary amount. I would ask that the chairman be given permission to sign this, but with this caveat. And ask that we not approve the requested days at this time in order to give our architect and our general contractor the opportunity to discuss how many days the contractor would propose to add to the schedule. So just to synopsize again, I'm asking the board to vote to give the chairman permission to sign the dollar amount, but for now, not the requested days.
Mr. Chairman, I think you, along with what the sheriff said, so these amounts and these items have already been ratified by the committee. You've given the sheriff and myself the ability to approve those things in your stead, because they have to be done in a timely fashion. So actually, everyone is proceeding along those lines, that those things done, those items ordered or constructed. And so, in that, in that sense, we're asking for ratification of those.
Okay. And we're holding off on the, for a more formal discussion. I guess now. Do you understand what the motion would be?
I do. Yeah. So we're just needing to proceed with the monetary part, so they can get the ball rolling, and then we'll work out how many days.
That's correct.
So I'll move, we approve the monetary, and I'm not seeing that in front of me. I would give you an amount, but I'm not seeing where that.
Forty-seven two forty, is that?
That's the bottom of that page, it's forty-seven thousand.
I would second that.
Got a motion, the second to allow the chairman to sign the documents with regards to the change order, dollar amounts, but not days requested. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried.
Thank you.
The next time, Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board to consider, is there a request to let the bids for our transport, transport van, the back half of the transport van? So we've already purchased the vehicle, and now we need to add the component that goes in the back.
The cage.
Cage is.
Motion to approve the cage.
Mr. Chairman, we would, we would set the bid opening for December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, eight fifteen.
Anything for the new, new building upstairs?
No.
The van?
It certainly is a large contributing factor, but the reality is, we've had a transport van for many years, and ours needs to be updated.
Okay, did you get the second?
I did.
Got a motion, the second to approve the purchase of the interior of the sheriff's department transport van. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. And you can have the bid letting date in time already.
Mr. Chairman, I wish you something for me, that's all I have.
Thank you for good.
Thank you. We have to wait till eight twenty-five, Mr. Chairman, for a call.
Right.
Okay. I think we'll just take five minutes right here and situate it. I'll call the meeting back. We got about a minute yet. Then we're gonna do a public hearing on alcohol license renewals. As you do every year about this time.
Are there any new ones on there, or any changes, Brenda?
They'll pretty much stay the same.
Okay, say twenty-five, time and place, the public hearing regarding liquor license renewals across county, Packer Liquids Off Sale, Retail, and Sunday On Sale. And retail on-off sale wine.
Yep, this is the time and place for the renewals of all of our liquor licenses and wine licenses in the county. I did reach out to the sheriff's office, and there is, has, were no issues with any of the applicants, so.
You said no changes?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Let's open up to the public. If you want to say something for or against any of the light renewals on this list, please stand, state your name, an address for the record, and let us know your feelings. Anyway. Don't see anyone in the audience. I don't see anyone online. So I will close the public hearing and leave it open to the board. Motion to approve. Got a motion, the second to approve our list of alcohol license renewals. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Now I know what you're buster boys. I forget about signing this whole big stack.
Well played.
You can, yeah, I'll just sign them as we go. Mr. Bay, if you want to come on up.
Um, I have a couple of permits. I have one approach permit, tonsils, request permission, permission to construct a private approach on the north side of the Elk Creek Road. This is to access one of their three lots. Two lots of that area. Site distance to the, to the west is fine. A site distance to the east is minimal. And also in the original plans, and I did go to the planning zoning, we checked as far back as we could find for construction of this development, which that's when it was called Second Street, does now have a rappel hole place. And, and that road is supposed to access those properties. It is kind of challenging for that arapa hole place where it's, where it's built. They own the property all around the south end of that road. It is, it would be quite challenging to build that road. For that reason, they would like an approach off of the Elk Creek Road to that, that property. I'm not particularly in favor of this approach because of the site distance to these. Fair amount. I do see their need for an approach there if they were going to sell.
This conference will now be recorded.
Data to speak to this and I don't know that he has. If I, if I knew they had a better reason for that approach, I don't know. If he was going to sell that lot, maybe that would make more sense to me, but at this time it doesn't make much sense to me. So without, if he didn't have anything better to say about it, I guess he's not here, so. But I can't, I can't really recommend this approach.
What I'm hearing you say is he has platted access to that lot.
Correct. On a, a rappel hole place. It's got platted access to that lot. Like I said, the, the challenge is just building the road to it. It's an unconstructed road. Around it, so.
But he has platted access. He doesn't need it off the counter, or he already has.
That's right.
Is that right? And, and you're not completely comfortable with the location because.
No, the site distance to the, to the east is my biggest concern.
Okay.
How quickly did I request?
Okay, got a motion to second to deny the access permit. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Most carry.
Uh, the second thing I have here is the utility permit. This is brought to us from Black Hills Energy. This is for a power pole and an overhead line on the Hanover. The, uh, the pole, there's an existing pole there that will be removed and a new pole put in place and then an overhead line to service a new home on twenty-one, four, six Dan Hanover. I did throw in some conditions to the permit, that the pole will be located at the outer limits of the right way and then also that they would do the maximum height available where the pole to eliminate any problem with snow burden on the lines and getting down the load and putting them on. There's a minimum, you know, height by state statute, but there is no maximum, but I, you know, I did ask them to observe the maximum height that they could give that. So I would recommend a few of that.
I'm only following superintendent's recommendation.
Oh, second, the motion second to call a recommendation to approve the occupants, occupancy permit. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Okay.
Um, and then the other thing I have here for you to consider, and that is our twenty twenty-five budget for, we had some pickup trucks on there for our, out of our equipment budget. And we did reach out to a couple of the local dealerships in the town just to see the availability. And there is some questions of the availability. We'd like to move forward and get these things ordered as soon as possible. And I guess my question to you guys is how would you like to go forward with that? In the past, we've always tried to purchase these locally. We have the option of buying up state bid. There are some pickup trucks on the state bid that we could, we could get, you know, out of here or we can ask our local dealers to either onto that state bid or we can bid them ourselves. And I guess I'm asking you, what would you like? We've always done.
That would be the preference for me anyway is to see if we can get the, how close the state price we can get and.
I will put together some bid specifications and then we can set the bid date maybe at the next meeting. That's all right.
You might just double check with Mr. Al Kev.
If we do a bid, we have to accept the bid or can we still take the state? We can, we can reject. We can reject market.
Our options are for them to, to meet the state bid. I can request that of them. We've never had much luck with the local dealers doing that, but we can certainly request that they meet the state bid. Or we can bid them, you know, separately through our dealership. And I'll, I'll put some, I can put some bids together.
At the next meeting. Set the better opening at the next meeting, John?
I think we'll set a bid date at the next meeting. That'll give you some time to keep up, to put together some.
December, that would be December seventeenth.
We'll set a bid date at that time.
That would be the date you would open.
November twenty-sixth, you would set a bid opening date and your chairman to open bids on December twelfth or whatever it is.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen. Other than that, let's say I get the, so we get representatives from Rose here that are here to do the, our annual per inspection report. I will leave that up to you. If you guys have any questions afterwards, certainly feel free to.
Okay.
John, Hamlin, Rose in here.
Thank you for seeing us today. As you know, the FHWA or the SDU, he requires us to present our plans for per inspections directly to the commission of the councils these days. So here we are. You've probably seen this before. This year we had forty-one charges on our, on our list. This is the twenty-four month inspection cycle. Basically there's a few that are still on twelve, twelve month, but we have those as well.
Can I get one more, John?
So I'll just go through them. Thanks for your pro- productivity. We've done about four that we wanted to visit with you about as far as being kind of the worst that we've seen this year. They draw the most attention to us anyway. We'll just start out at the I ninety bypass or service road, I should say. Get structure forty-one, zero, one, five, zero, four, zero. The deck on that, it's an eighty-four year old steel dirt bridge. The deck is coming apart pretty bad on that. I know, I, I think Doug and John can speak to where they're at and any processes that we have going on. They've already, already started with replace, with respect to rehabilitation replacement. It's an eighty, eighty-four year old structure, so it's basically already surpassed its design life. We expect when we design and when we design structures, we, we try to get a seventy-five year to a hundred year plant cyclotom. That's kind of the FHWA and ASHTA wear design standards. So this one's already surpassed its lifespan. The deck continues to deteriorate. It's been patched several times. The patches are starting to fall out. There's deterioration on the underside as well. We're getting pretty close to, you know, thinking about load rating that bridge due to the deterioration of the deck. Well, yeah, you know, that's the structure that you guys, we applied for a big land engineering grant this last August, which you guys were successful. So right now we are currently in the hydraulics to figure out the required size of structure to go in there. So you guys have been proactive because we saw this coming. So we've already started down the replacement workflows, so to speak. So once we get the hydraulics done, which will probably be end of twenty-five by the time we get through all the state stuff, then we hopefully will be ready to do something about a replacement grant next January of twenty-six or a big.
Okay, so who want to replace with box cover?
Now, sure will be an option that we're looking for. Yeah, it's a sixty-two foot long bridge. That's usually the, usually the length that a box cover works well. We'll move on to the next one then. This is a, the structure down. This one, I think this is a relatively new finding for you guys. It has been closed since, since we inspected this, the structure has been closed, which is good because we're going to close at least the outside eight or ten feet of, of that structure on both sides due to the deterioration of the beams. Uh, this is the one, I think last March, you guys decided you want to move this forward to get to be replaced as soon as possible. So we have actually have the bid review ready, set of plans all ready to go in for the, for the January second, middle day. So a resolution will be showing up into your next couple of meetings to, to submit that. You guys scored seventy-six points, which is way, way above. So, uh, I mean, there's no guarantees in life, but it looks really good. You will get that grant. And then they usually announce them in March. Then the, by being good to be ready, we have all of our permits in place. Hopefully we can get that bid and get a contractor that wants to do something for the fall. So once again, you guys were proactive on that one too. All right, that structure is just obviously, this is on Yelk Creek Road. It's a single span pre-stress gutter bridge. Generally the structure is in pretty good shape. The deck though is getting some deep scale and abrasion basically up to anywhere from an inch to two and three, it's an inch deep and that's exposing re-steal. Basically on this one, we're just kind of recommending doing something to address that, anything from a low slump overlay or, or a thin concrete overlay. And I believe you guys have been talking about that in the past as well. So you're, uh, good to know you guys are on top of everything that we're recommending. That's really, really all I need to talk about on that. The rail, the rail is getting pretty corroded on that as well. Might need, you know, some, uh, sandblasted down to white metal and then repair any lost section and then, I mean, that's a fairly simple. I'm repairing the last one that I'll bother you with today is down on Nemo Road, the box gutter bridge. I'm sure you're well aware of this one as well. It's got severe deterioration on the exterior girders. And because it has asphalt overlay on it, we can't really determine what's going on on the rest of the beam on the inside because they don't show severe deterioration underneath and in between, but we don't know what it's like on the sides, on the stems. But our recommendation was to close the outside gutter on that, which we've done. And I, I believe that's all for being addressed. Yeah, two years ago, uh, because there's basically twin bridges side by side down in there. The county commission, they got, hired us to do the hydraulics part of that directly. So the hydraulics have been done on the two fifty, then the two forty-nine, the side of both box beams. So those are done and both of them are going to be box cover replacement options. It's just a matter, unfortunately, right now they score in the low thirties, which would not be, it would not get you a replacement grant. So we've been talking with John and kind of having a plan to try to figure out where we get these and when we pull the trigger on these and how do we get the score up? So yeah, that's, we've been talking to that too. And I only showed two fifty, um, two sixty-eight on this one, but the two forty-nine, two sixty-eight, which is like you said, is adjacent to it. It's catching up with this one for deterioration. That wasn't as bad as little as six years ago and it's really, it's really accelerated in the last few years. Just, just the visibility of it on the outside and typically because obviously we recognize that we have to use road salts to, uh, you know, thaw the ice. That tends to attack this stuff a little more aggressively too, so. And really not a lot you can do about that because obviously you need that on the bridges as well, but that's, they're at a point, once you kind of get to a certain level, it, it really takes off and we're kind of at that point with structures for deterioration. So where that leads us in the future, we'll see as far as load ratings go, things like that. You know, closure of the exterior girders, that kind of thing. But that's pretty much it for right now. Like I said, you guys have been really proactive, a couple of instructors that run this, this last year or last cycle are no longer here because they've been replaced. So we appreciate that. Keeps a great hair off our heads. And thank you for the, providing the service for you guys.
Thank you, board.
Adam, so I do, I did put on this report, the work we did on the Winterville Bridge. That was all directly from the bridge inspection report, everything that the county is able to do from their recommendations, you know, make everything up to do. So that's one bridge that we, we did some repairs, hauling, we painted the railing and all of the substructure and then we also aligned all of the approaches on the lock path portion. Just to let you know that there, you know, these bridge reports are fairly important and we do everything we can to accommodate their recommendations. Other than that, I don't really have anything else for you guys. We did have our sale. That concluded the last, the twenty-second of last month, uh, we did off of our, our, all of our equipment that you guys surplus, we made seventy-one thousand nine hundred ten dollars. So it was a pretty successful sale. Also it's been picked up. I think we have one truck still sitting there and that bridge, that old bridge, it sold sixteen thousand dollars, which is really shocking. I thought these guys would buy it back and put it somewhere else. So anyway, if you guys got anything for me? I got nothing else.
I want to say thank you. I, I had a, a person in the city of Spearfish that uses that Winterville Bridge. They walk out there and they've got clients that are hand, have, have a mobility issues. And where the walking path, the bike path is up there, the edges are getting pretty rough and, and I just happened to catch Mr. Bay right before when they were working on that and he got out there or the crew when they did that, they made sure to address that and I have a very positive response back from that. Thank you again. Well. All right. We got some time now. Anyone in the audience is here for the nine o'clock public hearing? I believe you've got a signup sheet if I'm not mistaken. If you think you might want to talk on the item, any of the items, actually, I think there's just the one public hearing. Please put your name and address, contact information on the notepad over there and we're going to use that, I believe, to go down to call people for public hearing. So instead of it being open except for the, uh, maybe online folks, that's how we're going to handle discussion and comments on the public hearing for the, the ordinance twenty-four dash five. And we like to say we've got some time, we got about fifteen minutes. Um, I don't know if we have anything you can plug in. There's some plaques maybe if, if Amber wants to jump ahead.
Get, get set up here a little bit too, so we can get that to the brain.
Okay. Let it work then we'll, we'll have enough time for people to get signed in. You got about fifteen minutes.
Okay, a lot of work, then we'll, we'll have enough time for people to get signed in, we got about 15 minutes.
I'm gonna do the recording, so thank you.
Testing 1, 2, 3.
Amber, can you hear me? Thank you.
Hearing, please make sure your name is on the list. Uh, we'll go through the list once, we'll go through the folks online and check if there's anybody there. Um, I am acting chairman today simply because Mr. Ewing cannot hardly speak. And uh, he, he does not have any conflict on this issue, uh, I believe the last time he had a family member that may have been possibly involved, not in the ordinance revision, but has, has moved on to other occupation or other opportunities anyway. So, there is that, I wanna make sure everybody's phone is on silent, so we can get through this. We'll have, when, when we call your name, we'll have you stand and come to the front, you're addressing the board and not the audience, please, we're the ones that will be making the decision here. And we won't be making the decision today, today's the public hearing, we'll have some discussion. Um, we may ask some additional questions of, of the folks that are speaking. Uh, but then we'll, that today, we more than likely will close the public hearing and then we'll take action until the next commission meeting on the
26th.
26th.
Today is also Mr. Chairman, so you have the second reading on the 26th, at that time when you could possibly take action.
Right, we do have also in the record, just so everybody's aware, a handful of letters. I've got Livinggood, Berry, Bush, Christian Cook, Lamb, and Running for sure. Pick up the living. Additional items, what's that?
I think that's a living good, I selected two letters.
I believe, I see three items in here, uh, one meant a double, so yes. So we do have a, a lot of other information that may or may not be heard today, but we definitely have a list of, of letters and things that all have good information on it, I feel, so thank you for those. I'm sorry, sir?
Is there one vote required or two votes?
There will be one vote, but again, it'll be at the next meeting, so.
Right, and then here, did you say Scott Berry, did you say Berry?
I did.
Okay, I was just making sure, that's all I have then.
All right, 10 o'clock, wanna, they're back online.
Yep.
Uh, it's time and the place for the first reading and public hearing of ordinance 24-5. Uh, zoning board of adjustment and conditional use permit, uh, discussion. Would you like to kick this off?
I can, um, so the ordinance proposals have been online for quite some time, um, nothing has changed over the last couple of meetings, there's been no edits to it, so it's the same document that was out there. Uh, I didn't plan on going through it in detail, I think you guys have all had a chance to read it unless you want me to. Okay, that's kind of long to you guys, but the changes are here, they've been on here. It's basically setting up that conditional use permits would be heard by the board of adjustment, just like the current variances and appeals have always been. Um, we're just adding conditional use permits to that list. Uh, other than that, the public hearing process is the same, so when someone applies for a CUP, they still have to go through the regular public hearing process. Um, which would be, you know, you'll have first and second reading, I mean, all of that stuff still applies, you're still gonna have that public hearing process. It's just the board of adjustment would act on it versus the county commission, that's really the gist of the changes that we're trying to achieve.
Mr. Ewing?
Bear with me here, we, Lawrence County has always had a board of adjustment. Some folks think we're creating it, but we're not, it's always been there. So we're not creating a new, a new thing here, it's already been in place forever. We're just changing the way we're, what state law dictates how we should be doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Ewing alluded to the fact that years ago the state law was changed, and we had to actually list items uh, in, in our ordinance that could be considered, considered for conditional use, and if they're not in there, we couldn't consider them, or we'd have to change the ordinance. And so there's discussion whether or not that sort of already initiated this process, or it didn't. But this would be a discussion to, I guess, to formally, if we adopted this, it would be to formally, to put it in that, in that realm and under that.
It would move it from the other process to the board of adjustment, yes, yep.
Okay, uh, any other items you wanna hit on?
Not unless you guys have specific questions about, you know, the ordinance at all for me, other than that, I have the pitch, so.
Well, if you wanna, um, this is a public hearing, and what I'll have you do is she's gonna read off your name, and if you would, you can come up in front, please address the board. Uh, we'll hear what we have to say, normally we just do three minutes, or that's actually public comment, but we're gonna let you go for a reasonable amount of time. Go over this right there.
So the first one is Patrick.
Patrick.
Morning, members of the board, Patrick Malone from Dakota Gold, 106 Glendale and Lead. Uh, we are pleased to support the ordinance as proposed. Uh, for an industry, whether we're talking about mining, whether we're talking about real estate development, agriculture, uh, having a defined process is very important. After reviewing the ordinance as proposed and reviewing it with our legal counsel, we think it strikes the right balance. Um, predictability while giving everyone an opportunity to, to be heard and challenge decisions. Um, and for these reasons, we are in full support of the ordinance, thank you.
Quinn?
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission, my name is Quinn Neff, it's the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association. Uh, just a little background, I'm Keystone, uh, but I worked for the last six years up here in Lawrence County in mineral industries, and uh, I think it's a pretty good uh amendment to add and follow state law to give some regulatory certainty to applicants who are applying for conditional use permits. I understand concerns, you know, about the right to petition, and I guess, best analogy I can think of is on my time on a Keystone Town Board, our big issue is signs. And if, if we had a sign permit go to a public vote, I think you'd need 13 signatures at Keystone to go to a public vote. We wouldn't get a lot done with signs. And so this is a little bigger issue, where you got companies that are investing a lot of time, they're employing people. Um, just got done with a six-year project that ended up not applying for an additional use permit, so. I think uh, it's important to have a balance of, of addressing citizen concerns, but also respecting property rights of those applicants. Um, so I, I think this is uh, very supportive from the South Dakota Mineral Industries to make these changes. And um, I'd also just like to highlight that all minerals matter, whether it's aggregate or anything, so. Aggregate, you know, for a lot of residents here, if you push that mining out of the county, costs go up, which usually results in higher property tax, so. Anything we can do to provide some certainty about citizens and applicants, if we're doing it, we're in full support of this, thanks.
The next one is Shelley Rose.
Um, thanks for your opportunity to address me, I'm Shelley Rose, 4,000 Pine Pitler Avenue in Spearfish, I also work at the Coral War. Um, and I am in full support of this ordinance, I think it's important for us in order to stimulate some more economic growth to give that certainty of how this process should work, and that it's not um, a small minority that can bring, fully special election, to bring a business down that has spent and invested and wants to grow in our community. Um, so I think it's very important, I also think it's important to have guidelines in place that are easy for a business to understand and follow when they want to come into our area and grow. It's important not to stifle that economic growth, Lawrence County is very diversified, we have a lot of different types of industries in it. that bring in the revenue and the funds that we need to be able to sustain the life here that we want. A lot of these businesses that are coming in that want to build here or want to do business here have done their homework, right? They've done their due diligence. They've done the proper regulatory, followed the proper regulations from the state or other permitting in order to be able to even bring to you their request for that conditional use permit. So there is a lot of investment before they even get to that point. If they have to have a concern about that being revoked by a small minority of the county, they may decide not to come here. And so I am very much in favor of us moving forward with this ordinance to put in place a process that is fair and that will help to move our economic growth up. Thank you very much.
Jessica McColley?
My name is Jessica McColley. I also work for the Coral War. I live in Lawrence County, Spearfish. I'm also in the business of the ordinance. I think it's a good opportunity for the inmates and homeowners to work together for a property. I have never been in one of them yet, so keep going.
Ask him.
Justin Gordon, five-club man in Lead, employee at Coral War. I'm ready for this amendment and second what the folks in town say.
I'm part of hearing. I've been a terrible time hearing other people, so I'm going to speak loudly and ask others to do the same.
My name is Lynn Levin Good, charge Colonel 10305.
Mr. Livinggood, could you come up in front of us, please? I appreciate it.
It's not a problem. Keep it behind me, you can't hear us. I can look that far in the back.
I think you're probably good right here.
I can carry as well. I'll try to speak loudly.
Okay.
Lynn Levin Good, charge Colonel 10305, Home State Grove Spearfish. A long time ago, someone smarter than myself proclaimed that a government that doesn't trust its people to vote should not itself be trusted. The proposed ordinance is double oh five. It's passed to extinguish Lawrence County citizens' right to referendum vote on CUP issues, and that's a vote of the majority of the people and not just the minority. That's a freedom that Lawrence County, the current CUP approval ordinance honors. Moreover, if passed, statute eleven two one dash sixty-one point one regarding the appeal of CUP requires that district court shall give deference to the decision of the approving authority. This means there could be a hundred great reasons not to approve a CUP, but if only one reason is given for its passage, the court must approve the passage. This could end up with wind farms on the edge of town, feedlots next to allotments, you know. But before we can discuss double oh five on the merits, we need to have transparency into how and why this measure has been brought back into consideration. At the last hearing on ordinance twenty-four double oh four, you, the commissioners, voted to send it back to applying the zoning office for modification. I personally compared double oh four with double oh five, and there were absolutely no changes were made. And I verified that with direct vote. I also asked who wanted it brought back unmodified and received no answer. South Dakota statutes require transparency, require it's their record. So if someone's trying to overrule the commissioner's vote for modification, we have the right to make who made that decision and why, and how they avoided the vote of this commission to require that the report be modified. Simply by changing the number doesn't overturn the authority of this commission to have it modified. Also, if you are the two planning zoning board members who voted in favor of double oh five for members who have conflict of interest because of their direct employment by mining companies. Regarding this budget conflict of interest, during the double oh four hearing, Commissioner Ewing indicated conflict prevented participation. Because double oh five is the same as double oh four, I assume the answer will not change. Also, while considering a proposed mining CUP on Home State Grove, Commissioner Sleep stated he owned adjoining acres next to the mine site and that he wanted his property to be mined. So he has a financial conflict of interest and should not be permitted to vote on this issue. The three commissioners that voted for double oh four to be modified are also wondering why it resurfaced without any changes being made unless there's been a commissioners meeting or non-public census. The only stated reason for this ordinance passing, the only stated reason by the county is that recent changes to state statutes require the changes, and we have to make the changes to bring our ordinance into compliance. I personally asked attorney-accu, Dr. Vogel, Commissioner Jennings for a list of alleged changes have gotten nothing, except that attorney-accu sent me two statutes, which neither of which were recently changed and neither of which require these changes. The body cannot pass an ordinance based on speculation. We have, you and the public have the right to know the underlying facts. So unless a listing of the recently changed statutes you just filed, passing double oh five on unsupported speculation would be arbitrary prejudice. And if such a list appears, then we require enough time to go research to see if the facts of these alleged statutes so require a change, so they occur in ordinance. It's too late for a bait and switch. There's been no state attorney general's opinion that supports the speculation that changes in statutes require these changes to be made. The two statutes that attorney-accu listed requiring this change, the first one is double eleven dash two dash forty-nine, which merely states that, except that provided in eleven two sixty, the board shall provide for the appointment of the board of adjustment. As one of you personally said, it's already happened. Next, eleven two dash sixty provides an allude of appointing the board of adjustment. The board of county commissioners may act to perform all the duties and powers of the board of adjustment. As you guys have said, you guys already do it. So those two statutes do not require any change of the existing ordinance. As I state, as I outlined in my written opposition, double oh five does not conform to Lawrence County twenty thirty comprehensive plan. There's nothing in it that requires mitigation of pollution, which is not found in the current double oh five changes. So we're scratching our heads. By merely changing the number from double oh four, double oh five, someone has sent double oh four unmodified back to this body, which there's no procedural record how that could happen or why it happened or who made it happen or who made a decision. And the record needs to be clear, procedural record needs to maybe make it clear, of double oh four, which you guys voted to go back to be modified, all of a sudden resurfaces at double oh five without modification, violating your vote to send it back for modification. It's a usurpation of authority, which without certification on the record would not pass legal challenge. My research did find a positive case on this issue. It's the Armstrong case, or whatever. Armstrong, in turn. In two thousand and three, the legislature amended eleven two fifty-three and gave the board of adjustment the authority to approve conditional use permits. However, then in two thousand and four, the legislature removed those statutory provisions, giving the board of adjustment the authority to approve CUPs. It then enacted eleven dash two dash seventeen point three, giving counties a power to designate the approving authority for approving conditional use permits. That statute currently is existing, and our county is in compliance, and this board is in compliance with that statute. Because Lawrence County current CUP approval authority complies with eleven dash two dash seventeen point three, there's no legal authority in our statute that has been defined by anybody in support of this that requires the passage of this ordinance just before it puts currently number twenty-four dash year bill five. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Get a copy of that letter from you.
Can you read my writing?
Thank you.
I have it there.
Next one is... I'm not very good at reading.
I'm Al McLean, 10853 East Wood Grove Spearfish. And I will change the news in a few weeks, and I think it's worth finding that word again, and I think we should leave it as it is. Thank you.
Kristen?
Hello. Nice to see you all again. I want to start with a question. Since we already have a board of adjustment and you mentioned that you made that point, would you please let us know who the members of that board of adjustment are?
The county commission is the board, acts as the board of adjustment.
Then, okay, then what's confusing, why were we able to go the referendum route before, but we will not in the future?
That's a discussion for outside meetings. That's a question that you should have had before you came. If you would like to, if you have things to speak.
I do. And actually, I think this speaks to what I want to say, which is, right now, we have a process. It were, oh, Kristen Wayne, 2298 Cedar Avenue. We have a process. We've heard from a number of people who are for the change, but it's interesting that everybody for the change has a financial interest. So it's the financial interest versus the citizens who have to live with the consequences. I get that. You can look anywhere in this country and that's going to be a conflict. But I think as citizens, we need to feel that we have recourse to speak to you, to have you listen to us. If we don't like the decision, we can gather a signature on petition, which is not easy to do. We've heard the comments that, oh, it's easy. They just have to get a few signatures. No, you go door to door. You have to plead your case. It takes a lot of time to remember. It went to a vote. The people who have a financial interest in it, they had a right to vote too. They had a right to get their folks all together to vote. The vote went in favor of the people who did not want to have the gravel course. By appointing yourselves as the board of adjustment and taking, you sit there, we have recourse. You put another hat on that says board of adjustment, and now we don't have any recourse except to go to court, which costs like thirty thousand dollars minimum. So to me, it's obvious that the whole reason you're doing this is because you do not want us to be able to go to the voters on these issues. I'm kind of appalled that in the state of South Dakota, that's something that you see, that's something that happens at the federal level when some states say, oh, we don't need to have voter ID. Why don't you need to have voter ID? The only reason you don't need to show who you are is because you want to be able to cheat. So you basically want to shut us up and not let us have recourse. And I'll end with the fact that we've got a comprehensive plan here. And again, I think, and we said this the first time, I think there's a way to work this out to have people come together and when you've got a particular issue and seriously listen to people who might be impacted and talk with the people who want to benefit financially from it and come up with a compromise. There are probably ways to protect the environment a little bit more than just using some of these regulations that they say they're using. Comprehensive plan. Two areas I want to read, and then I am done. Goal: Support the preservation of open space and natural areas throughout Lawrence County. More specifically, maintain high levels of environmental quality and minimize impacts to natural resources from future growth and development. There's got to be a way to work this out, but the way to work it out is to be transparent, let the people vote, and actually realize that maybe you need to hear both sides and not just opt for the folks that have the money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Brenda.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Ennis. I live at 19810 Gottler Road here in Spearfish. And I oppose twenty-four dash zero zero five. Thank you.
Next is...
And I just want to state that I strongly oppose ordinance twenty-four oh five.
Naomi?
Naomi, looking through number four one Gottler Road. My main concern is that this proposed ordinance does not comply with twenty thirty comprehensive plan. And, you know, I've heard that other counties in the state have this, give their commissioners this authority to approve cups. So there are sixty-six counties in South Dakota, and I find it hard to believe that all sixty-six counties let their commissioners, who are all on the board of adjustment as well, make these far-reaching decisions. And as far as the statute or state law, I don't believe that it has been specifically given to Mr. Levin Good or other people who have asked for it by name. And I just feel that there is hostility towards the citizens who are just trying to exercise their right, and that this ordinance demonstrates that by making, by allowing decisions made by the office with no checks and balances, because everyone in a position of basically policing themselves. And that is what many citizens, and that's what it appears to be. And then as far as, you know, the board of commissioners, in the previous election, I believe there are three other individuals who ran. And when the vacancy was vacated, neither of the three were appointed to his vacancy. So in the event of future vacancy were to come about, I'm just curious, even though I read that it's the board of commissioners shall appoint, if there would be a reason why someone who ran, putting in their blood, sweat, and tears to go door to door and get lost by, say, fifty points, would not be appointed to that seat because that is who the citizens had voted for. And I am curious how many referendums in the past, say, ten years have been turned over or voted out because people make it appear that, you know... and they're in residential areas that were zoned residential, and nobody wants to have the detrimental health effects that to along with, for instance, a gravel quarry. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mark? No, other words, sorry. Did you want to say anything, Mark? Sorry.
Mark Rizin, 114457 Brownsville, please. I just have basically a couple of questions. My question goes back to where I've been here before. If it goes to Board of Adjustment, which I don't agree with, I don't agree changing, who's going to enforce the CUPs? And what are the consequences for not following them? I still have not got answers to those, so that's why I oppose.
Kevin?
Really? I've got more down the list.
We are, yes.
Hi, I'm Kevin Farmer, address 11794 Crook City Road. I don't know if this question right now is relevant, but does the, in granting CUPs and stuff like this, does the county accept the responsibility of liability for granting those CUPs?
I won't answer it. We don't usually answer questions in the middle.
If you have something specific, you'd like information on the...
Can I get an answer to that question in the future?
You can certainly ask counsel or ask an attorney, but do you have anything on the ordinance specifically?
Specifically, the ordinance, situations that may be graded by those due to dust and land value losses and stuff like that, I think all the citizens are probably representing here is their health and their value of their properties, and I want to know who's going to compensate for all of that, once you guys decide to make a decision or if you do go forward. And if it ends up landing across my house, I'm going to demand that I have an immediate reevaluation of my property values and cut it in half, because I'll guarantee you my property value will be cut in half. The limestone ditch or any type of gravel quarries right across the road from me, and the driveway is going to be 300 feet away from my front driveway. In reference to Crook City Road, I think the last time Tom Lean and Western Construction took a run at it, you know, there were some, we were successful in, you know, with our petition that time as well. And but going forward here now, in reference to Crook City Road, we've had some housing developments that are going in, there's more people moving into the area, there's actually 39 or 41 home sites that are being developed on, to the east of my property, where their main driveway in and out entrance is going to be Crook City Road or passing right in front of where possibly there may be a CUP granted. And I think that going forward there, the, you've got a little bit of traffic conditions for trucks and stuff on the road, and safety issues at the intersection of Crook City Road and Highway 85 as far as turning lanes, lots of safety issues there, so that's why I'm asking about the liability. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mark Tezen?
Good morning. I'm Mark Tezen with Home State Mining Company. Home State supports, only supports the amendment to ordinance 2405. Decisions on conditional use permits should be made by electable, eligible representatives and should not be subject to the referendum process. Due to their very nature, special elections, referendums are generally low turnout elections that do not necessarily accurately represent the role of the people. In fact, many voters in the county may not be aware of the details related to a particular issue that's referred to a vote. However, through the CUP permitting process and public hearings like this one, elected officials on the Board of Adjustment would be fully aware of details and could make informed decisions. Thank you.
Tim Comer?
Tim Comer, 1131 Circle Spearfish. As a sixth generation resident of Lawrence County, I support all resource development in this county. I think this is the ordinance that this county needs, and I fully support this ordinance. And I don't know what more I can say. I think this is the seventh, or no, this is probably the eighth public meeting that's been held on this ordinance, between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the County Commissioners. So I fully support this ordinance as presented to you, Board of County Commissioners, and that's what I have to say.
Gerald?
Gerald Laverly, 1171 Alpine Circle in Lead. I'm here to support the ordinance also. I work for Dakota Gold, and I have a financial interest, I guess, but I've also lived here my entire life, and I have an interest as a citizen. And I think this discussion started with a view that there has to be a process, and it should be fair. And the way I see it, the county commission is in the best position, they're an electric group, to hear both sides or all sides of an issue and make an informed decision. And it's not simple. There are the needs of the county for gravel, for example, and there is the needs of the people that live next to them that have to be addressed, and that's, I just don't know that there's a better way than to have people that, such as yourself, sit and hear all the sides of the argument and make an informed decision, and that's the way it should be, and it's fair. Companies like mine invest a lot of money and are committed to building compliant projects, and all we expect is to have a process that we understand from the beginning and follow it, and be able to reach a successful outcome if one is to be reached. And so again, I support the ordinance as proposed.
Is somebody on the list?
Yep.
Is there anyone online that cares to speak either for or against ordinance 0520, 2405? If you do, if you'd unmute your mic. I don't see anyone coming on. Okay. Then with that, I think I'll close the public hearing. The commission can ask questions of anyone in the audience if they'd like, we can discuss them ourselves. This is just the first reading, so again, the decision will be made till, what is the date of that one again?
November 26 at 9:15.
November 26 at 9:15. The public hearing will be closed, so we will not take any more personal information, but you can certainly keep sending letters to the Planning and Zoning Office. We will have those before the next meeting, for sure. And as I said before, we do have quite a number that will also be entered into the record. Is there anything the commissioners like to say or add, or?
Brenda, can I make one question?
Please.
So Mr. Levin had asked the question about what were the changes. There were changes from the original document to this one, and it was in this conditional use permit section, because originally, there was a second part to this that basically said that the Planning and Zoning Office was going to start sending the public notices out, and after further research, it was determined that we should not do that. So that was the change. So I know there was argument of there was no changes, that was the change that was asked of me to make.
Well, I think the discussion initially was to go back and get more discussion, more input from the Planning and Zoning Board, which then decided to send it with those slight modifications, but not in its entirety.
Correct.
So that was a decision, that's who made the decision to send it back in the form that we have. It was all the actions of the Planning and Zoning Board have taken since then.
Yeah, so there were changes. There wasn't changes necessarily to the top part of the document, but the Chapter 19 conditional use permit, there were changes to it, and that was exactly correct. The Planning and Zoning Board did hold a public hearing, they did go through the process again, and they opted to not make any changes, because that was their decision. They felt that it was written the way that they wanted it to be written, and then now it's back before the county commission.
And I'm sure that any additional meeting minutes or anything, that the public can get ahold of those from your office, actually, they're available online, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, with that, let's go to the plats.
Okay.
And thank you so much, everybody. We appreciate all your time. I know it's not the nicest thing or the easiest thing to have to come down here to do a working day or early before your working day, but thank you.
Yeah, you asked if there was any changes to the Board of Adjustment. There was two sections that I worked on, the original one, two was [inaudible]. That was your question. Because I specifically worked with you, Larry.
Okay. Is that here?
I think I have them in order.
Okay, the person I have is 24-86, a corrective final, Josephson Benjamin. Is that correct?
Yes. So this one is a corrective plat, 22A1 revised to 22A2. I don't see Brad Lindell here. I think that's what he has planned. He was at Planning and Zoning, and with this one, it was, they had some issue when he went back, there was some closure issues on the plat, and so he opted to, it was better to correct it than it was to try to undo everything.
Is this that Creek City?
This one is, no, Josephson is off of Tinton Road, so Spearfish, Tinton Road.
Okay, I'll let you sort those out, and I'm not going to assign anything till then.
So that's what this one is. It's a final corrective plat, so really had nothing to do, you're approving the same thing, there was just a closure.
Oh, okay.
On it.
I got you now. Got a motion second to approve the corrected plat. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Strickel Village. No, sorry.
Homer?
Yep.
Okay. This one is a lot line adjustment. This is Erickson Road, Gomina area. So they're taking, they're moving the original lot four down, so five becomes smaller and four becomes bigger. So the lot line adjustment between the two properties.
Got a motion in the second to make the plat exempt from the fire plan since it's a lot line revision. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, please.
Mr. ... Motion to approve the [inaudible]. A motion in the second to approve the preliminary plat. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. ... Motion to approve the [inaudible]. A motion in the second to approve the preliminary plat. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next one is Wood. That Jamie Wood.
This one is a subdivision of lots, of a lot up in Terry Peak, the Last Chance Trail. These are, if you remember, these were existing kind of pieces that were left over from Terry Peak subdivision, basically, and they're looking at creating three lots, lot one, two, and three, all over two acres. The road is the Last Chance Trail Road, which is a road district road and everything already in there. And then they did do a full fire plan on this, just because it wasn't, you know, Terry Peak never had one originally, so they did do a fire plan and have approved and finished everything in the fire plan. It's just driveways have come off that existing road, though, that road. And I will talk about both plats. So the preliminary is the first plat that you're approving. The second plat is the final for just two of the lots, though. That's why it was separated.
Okay. More approval of preliminary plat submitted. Second. Got a motion second to approve the preliminary plat, lots one through three of Track G. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And the final.
The final is just for lots one and two, because three, they weren't quite done with the fire plan stuff yet. So one and two got fully completed, and three, they just weren't quite done, so they said, well, we'll just wait, and we'll do that one until we're done.
Okay. Motion to approve the final. Second. Got a motion second to approve the preliminary plat, lots one through three of Track G. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And the final.
The final is just for lots one and two, because three, they weren't quite done with the fire plan stuff yet. So one and two got fully completed, and three, they just weren't quite done, so they said, well, we'll just wait, and we'll do that one until we're done.
Okay. Motion to approve the final. Second. Got a motion second to approve the final of lots one and two of Track G. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. High Ridge Rentals.
All right, so this one was one that you have seen before, but at the time, I think there was some question on the access and how this is kind of an interesting one. So this is High Ridge, so this is off of Warren Loop, if you know where Warren Loop is. It's a road district road, 66-foot public driveway. And what they've determined is that you've got, so Warren Loop hits this lot two, it hits lot one, it hits lot five, and then they extended a 66-foot private driveway easement to lot three and four. So that does fall within our requirements of, you know, just a driveway to those two lots, because the rest of it is a public road. And with that, they did end up going through and doing a fire mitigation plan on that. So you have a preliminary and a final plat, and we did not make it exempt, just because we did have them do the fire plan. Some of these road districts are going to have to approve, so we'll see what happens.
Right. Did you say they didn't have to have a fire plan?
No, they did have to have one. Yep, they did.
Live or leave?
Yep.
And so it matches the preliminary, this is for a final matching the preliminary plan?
Correct. They didn't change the rule. This is a, you're approving a preliminary and a final plat. So if you approve the preliminary, the final is the same thing.
Okay, I got you. I'll just read that.
Sorry. Yep.
Okay. I'll move approval. Second. The motion second to preliminary and the final. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to do one more, and then we'll go to, we have a public hearing at 9:45.
This next one is a preliminary plat for Apple Springs. In this one, they're actually combining lots 11 and 12 together, so it's making a lot bigger. They already put a house on it, and they just ended up buying the neighboring lot.
Mine shows preliminary and final on the...
Yes, preliminary and final.
Okay. Motion to approve the preliminary and final. I don't, it does say exempt, but they didn't require a plan in place.
We ended up not doing exempt, it was just a mistake on the agenda.
Okay. So you got a motion to approve the preliminary and final. Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to do one more, and then we'll go to, we have a public hearing at 9:45.
This next one is a preliminary plat for Apple Springs. In this one, they're actually combining lots 11 and 12 together, so it's making a lot bigger. They already put a house on it, and they just ended up buying the neighboring lot.
Mine shows preliminary and final on the...
Yes, preliminary and final.
Okay. Motion to approve the preliminary and final. I don't, it does say exempt, but they didn't require a plan in place.
We ended up not doing exempt, it was just a mistake on the agenda.
Okay. So you got a motion to approve the preliminary and final. Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to pause the last for a minute, we're at 9:45. Public hearing, resolution 2024-38. Petition vacating the right of way affecting Blackfield's properties. This is up at [inaudible].
So there's stuff on here up there? Yeah, there's shit. Vacations? Yep. So this here is a, Chairman...
Yes, please.
This here is a vacation of, sort of a road vacation, because they're going to get rid of the cul-de-sac there that you see. It hits lot one, it hits lot five, and then they extended it 66-foot private driveway easement to lot three and four. So that does fall within our requirements of, you know, just a driveway to those two lots because the rest of it is a public road. And with that, they did end up going through and doing a fire mitigation plan on that. So you have a preliminary and a final plat. And we did not make it exempt just because we did have them due to fire plan.
Okay.
Some of these road districts are going to have to approve, so we'll see what happens.
Right.
Did you say they didn't have to have a fire plan?
No, they did have to have one. Yep, they did.
They've already, please.
Yep.
And so it, it matches the preliminary, this is for a final matching the preliminary plan?
Correct. They didn't change the rule. This is a, you're approving a preliminary and a final plat. So if you approve the preliminary, the final is the same thing.
Okay, I got you. I'll just read that.
Sorry. Yep.
Okay. I'll move approval. A motion second to, for the preliminary and the final. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to do one more and then we'll go to, we have a public hearing at 9:45.
This next one is a preliminary plat for Apple Springs. And this one, they're actually combining lots 11 and 12 together, so it's making a lot bigger. They already put a house on it and they just ended up buying in the neighboring lot.
Mine shows preliminary and final on the.
Yes, preliminary and final.
Okay. Motion to approve the preliminary and final.
The exempt.
I don't, it does say exempt, but they're going to fire plan and play.
We did, we ended up not doing exempt. It was just a mistake on the agenda.
Okay. So you got a motion to approve the preliminary and final.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to pause the plat for a minute over the 9:45. Public hearing, resolution 2024-38. Vacationing the right of way affecting Black Hills properties. This is up at Hutter House.
So there's, there's stuff on here up there?
Yeah, there's shit. Vacations? Yep.
So this here is a, Chairman.
Yes, please.
This here is a vacation of, sort of a road vacation because they're going to get rid of the cul-de-sac there that you see. And so then, no?
No, they're getting rid of the hashed area.
Okay, the hashed area.
The road that comes around. You guys will see the plat after this.
And that is to get rid of that there.
Yes.
Sorry, and I don't know if there is anybody here for this?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so let them talk in reference to that.
If you're okay with it, I'll combine it because you're going to see the plat here in a minute. So the process from planning and zoning is they recommended approval of the plat with the contingency that you guys have to approve this part first because this was, the roadway is being vacated. But since it was a public, it was originally dedicated as a public right of way, they had to go through the vacation process. And then the, the next process would be if this gets done, you guys have a plat showing you this re-designated drawing here, which shows the new driveway and, not the driveway, the cul-de-sac with road profiles and all the stuff. But we kind of had to do one before we could do the other. So I think that kind of explains where we're at with it. So it's just the hatched area that you're vacating in this document. Anything else? I think that that's what we need.
Yeah, okay. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak for or against this, please state your name and address for the record. And if you'd stand up and address the one, we'd appreciate it. Anyone want to speak for or against the vacation of this part right away? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open up the board. Let's discuss the cul-de-sac to the, and I'm going to say that looks like it's to the east of this plat. How long is that cul-de-sac from the, from the highway?
You guys want it? Yeah.
It is 750 feet.
The cul-de-sac to the east.
Oh.
The one you can't see on this, on this plat. How far away is that from the, from the? Because the cul-de-sac used to start at that collar when that was a loop? And now that it's not a loop, it starts clear out the highway. Or at best, it starts at the highway up at the end of the cul-de-sac and runs all the way to the end of the other cul-de-sac.
There is another cul-de-sac that runs to the east with a fire trail going off.
Is there an egress off of that one?
There is.
They go to that other cul-de-sac on the?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question. I couldn't find that information.
Okay.
And there is, they did designate a new easement back to the highway.
I did, I saw that.
But then you have the loop that's still, you just don't see it on here. If you keep going down this way, it actually loops back around.
Sure. Sorry.
The other access going out to the highway, has that been talked to with John Bay? Has that been approved by John now?
Yeah, we had originally gone for other accesses on this. And then once we moved that road, we just had two access, or two areas of access. I've actually got the approach permit for that area that is, that is line 14, 21.
Okay, thank you. And really, it's a fire safety question is what it boils down to. I always, I always get, get on those pretty hard. And this, you know, if there's going to be a fire out there, you can, if you have at least an all-wheel drive, an off, four-wheel drive, you can get out of there real easy. If you don't, as long as it's passable by a, by a normal car, then it should. Any other discussions, comments, motions?
So if I may just follow up, so this approach permit was for this spot, is that correct?
Yes.
For, for the one up there.
I understood that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the concern that we had in planning and zoning is that we didn't have a possibility without having an approach permit that gave us X fire escape success.
Okay. Motion to approve the vacation. Second, got a motion in the second to approve resolution 2024-38 to vacate this plat of right of way. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll go right into the vacation of the plat, that portion of the plat that this right of way would have, would occupy. So it's the same, same basic setup. We're just now changing the plat. So if that's clear as mud as everybody, that's good.
Motion to approve resolution number 2024.
Oh, I'll have a public hearing and then we'll, oh, I'm sorry. So it is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak for or against this, please stand, say your name for the record, address for it. Anyone? Yeah, I'll close the public hearing. Now, can I do it?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion in the second to approve the plat vacation. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Appreciate you wanting to get business done. Okay, we can get a few more plats done. Then we have another public hearing at 10:00. So we'll go back to plat items. 93, yeah.
95.
So we are at
95.
Sanctuary at Silver Creek item, lots 2A and 2B of Alford's Jewel subdivision.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's kind of a weird. 2A is the bigger piece, so it's 77.606 acres, that's 2A. And then 2B is this little tiny piece in here, which is .344 acres. And they're selling that to the old lot two that sits in here. They're going to sell that to them to give some additional parking. So it's just this little sliver way down in the bottom, but it was all part of that big piece. So the only way to make a legal description was to replat the big piece.
Sure.
Does that make sense? So it's just that it's, it's hard to see it, but it's just this little tiny piece in here and it's to extend it to give some more parking.
Motion for exempt.
Right in there, kind of where that cursor is sitting.
Sorry. Got a motion in the second to declare the plat exempt from the fire plan as it's going to be a transferred piece. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have the preliminary and the final. How long to approve this preliminary final? Second, got a motion in the second to approve the preliminary plat, lots one, 2A and 2B. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Looks like we're on Deer Mountain? Yeah. Maybe not. I had a weird carryover on my, my jet.
Yes, it is. So this is for plats of lots, sorry, preliminary plat of lots 101 through 204. So this is
Those paper copy people have right in front of us.
You should have the right one, right?
We do.
Okay. I know, it's not showing up here.
It's cool.
I know. I have the paper. I can talk you through it. I just can't show it to you.
I just laid one out.
Okay, look at that one, because I don't know where it went. So this is the changes and Randy's here to get questions. But basically, what we've been having them do whenever there's a revised preliminary is we have them do it in red. So we know where the revision takes place. So it's down here, there's some revisions, like right here, there's a little bit. And then right up top here, there's a little bit where that utility lot is. So that's why we differentiate where the lots changed. Yep, the lot numbers change a little bit, but usually that's just in red so we can see them. Randy, you want to add more to this one?
Simply the, the legal description change to include the utility lot down in this area, we changed the layout. We'll talk about that in a second. The number of lots is the same as the other preliminary plat numbering change.
Configuration.
And there's two less lots in this area that were added in another area.
But overall, there wasn't really any change to what, like the number of anything, it's just the configuration, which we see quite often with.
And the number of lots. And we revised one sheet of the plan going off of the roads. That was the only change. The rest from the first submittal to this revision. The walk, the water design is attached. You already approved the plan profiles and they have one.
Okay, this is just preliminary plat.
Right.
Right. Okay. Okay. No, this is, this is Deer Mountain, West Side, West Side of the Summit Road. That you approved about two months ago, three months ago, the preliminary plat. Motion to approve the preliminary. Second, got a motion in the second to approve the preliminary plat, lots 101 through 204, revised preliminary. Any other discussion? Do we need to do anything with the exemption on the cul-de-sac? Will we act on that? Probably shouldn't, should do that before we do the preliminary plat.
Chairman, you want me to explain?
Please.
Right over in this area. Right here, the original design showed a road looping. And you approved over a 14% grade on that profile with the first submittal. So we were able to get rid of that 14% grade and all of these grades are, are well under the 10%. And move the cul-de-sac here and put a driveway in here because the grading issue was here. And so we're 33 feet longer than the ordinance of the cul-de-sac. But we extended the cul-de-sac to there because that's where we want to put our hydrants so we can best service those lots. So rather than go into the over 14% grade, we now minimize that grade in there, reduce the lots by two in that area and extend the fire protection so it can reach those lots. So that's what the exception is about.
I think, I know you guys don't have the minutes, but planning and zoning did approve. They would rather see that than have the high grade. So they did approve that change.
And that, that makes a lot of sense from even a health department standpoint, I think, in my opinion. So I guess we would need to probably approve the exception
Exception.
The cul-de-sac length before we do the plat. If that's
I think that's how you guys did it in planning and zoning.
Actually, we did approve the, make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, including the exception.
Excluding the exception, there you go.
Cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Okay, there. Is that your motion? Yes. Yes, I'm good with it. Okay. Got a motion in the second to approve the preliminary with the slight adjustment or the approval of the the exception to the cul-de-sac length. There we go. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're going to, we're going to, while you're getting, before we talk about this letter of credit, let's go back. We have a 10 o'clock public hearing, supplemental budget. Back where we need to be.
Think it's charted on a A? If you can see me again, we're requesting supplemental budget of $75,000 to the insurance and bond line item of the budget. And this is for the work comp. During the end of the year. Unexpectedly, this represents a 35.5% increase from 2024 to 2025. And so we didn't anticipate that. We asked what the increase might be and it wasn't that at the time. So, you know, we're budgeting it here in advance, so we're taking a bit back, hide that amount. And if I may, I can get into some more detail, but approximately 3% of that 35.5% increase is attributable to rates. 15% is the fund modifier, so that's based upon our past experience. I think look back here, it's been five years, I believe. So that's our, our various work comp claims we've had over the last five years, they, they roll off 35 years. And then 9.4% is attributable to the year, year-over-year increase in payroll from one year to the next, about 884,000. And there's another 8% that's owing to payroll increases for law enforcement and then buildings as well. So I think those are some costs attributable to the new public catering services. So it was a public hearing. That's the explanation.
Okay. Just let me know. What is a public hearing? So if anyone would like to speak for or against this resolution, please state your name and address for the record and let us know your opinions. I don't see anyone online. So I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the board. Believe this is one of those where they tell you just to shut up and take your medicine.
I would say politely, hopefully.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Ewing and a second by Mr. Jennings to, to pay the bill, to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4-1.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are back.
memorandum of agreement.
Sure.
So this is to set it up for, so at planning and zoning, they recommended approval of the final plat with the condition that you guys approved the memorandum and the understanding for this. So you guys haven't, planning and zoning did not make a motion on this because they don't look at these. So what this is, is you have a memorandum of agreement for the lots that are listed in this plat here. And the amount of money, which is kind of different, but I didn't see an issue with it. The amount of money with the 15% contingency in the memorandum agreement is 66315, so 663,015. But the letter of credit is actually for 762,467 and 25. So in this case, the amounts don't match. We, we don't really care because the memorandum of agreement is what we're going to go by. They want more in their letter of credit. They can. I don't see why that would matter to us. I don't know if you have any other explanation why? Do you know why he went more? I lost count in the 50 million emails.
They, they got some of the topsoil put down and the seed and stuff completed. And there's some material on site.
Okay.
The number I have in front of me is not that. The stuff that I have online says 82393. So
There was an amended.
They sent a new one, I know, just last week, so that might be the change. This, this we just got. So this is the one that I have.
This, this is dated October 15th.
This one was November 15th. So I was like, I'm pretty sure this is the one, this is the original.
Yeah. I think what happened was that on Friday, after planning and zoning, there was an amended memorandum understanding that was sent. And I think as gentlemen says, that reflects the fact that some work had been done. So the letter of credit didn't need to be as much as the work time, work had been completed, right? So I think that revised amount reflects what was yet to be done.
Have you, have you seen the letter?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with the?
Yeah.
And Amber, you've seen it and you're comfortable with it?
Yeah, it just was odd that it was more, but I don't care.
Could you give us the new number again, please?
So the, the letter of credit is for But the actual memorandum
Thank you.
If I may, so your attorney was working with the previous
Document.
Value of remaining costs.
Yeah.
They just updated to a more current version.
Okay.
So you're looking for a motion for the chairman to allow the chairman to sign the memorandum of agreement between the county and the Keatings and the Rownton subdivision. Okay, so moved. I'll second that. Got a motion in the second, allow the chairman to sign the memorandum of agreement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yeah, so now we have final. And those, the final plat, that's, those are what we've just done the bonding for, is that correct?
Correct. So this is the final plat. I think it did say preliminary on there. That was my mistake. It just didn't get changed in the agenda, but
I'm just playing.
Okay, the lots 102, 103, I will, it's all, the lots that are listed on there. This is the final plat and it's what you just approved along. This is the final plat and it's what you just approved along. You have the, you know, the fire mitigation and all of that stuff.
Okay. Motion to approve. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the final plat lots one twenty, one thirteen, sixteen through nineteen, forty-two through one forty-eight, one thirty-two through one forty-eight. Deer Mountain, well, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Now we have an amended preliminary and final plat, Black Hills Properties. Looks like lot one revised, lot six revised. Identified right of way south of the states.
So this is gonna end up being the changes that we've just talked about, that amendment that you did. We show it on here. We'll have to go in and put the vacation, you know, once it, once they get through the vacation process, we'll have to add that to the plat. That's what we normally do is to show that that piece was vacated. That'll get added in. So if you were okay with it, you would approve the changes to the preliminary plat, which shows the new road profiles, taking away that old piece, showing the new emergency access easement coming off that side. That'll all get updated. So that's really the changes right here. These two lots get a little bit bigger because that right of way now is gonna go back
Sure.
into the lot because the right of way is gone. But we just have to add the vacation document.
Yeah, so this is a housekeeping item in reference to the big, the right of way vacation and the plat amendment
Correct.
adjustments.
Yes.
A lot of those.
It cleans up what you just undid. You're redoing it.
Cleans up our mess.
Okay.
The motion to approve.
To approve the preliminary and final fire plan. Everything's already been handled. I'll move to approve the preliminary and final plat as presented. Second. Got a motion in second to approve the updated plat by Black Hills Properties. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Randy, can you clarify? How long do we have to wait then to record that plat? Does it take thirty days? Okay, so we'll just, we just have to hold it until she knows it's been vacated.
Has to be published.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, we have the release of Maitland Parker's performance bond dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. That was to finish their fire mitigation plan.
Yes.
About ten thousand six ninety-two.
So this was for twenty-seven and one thirty-one. So we did have a question, and if we can't do it, that's fine. We already told them probably not. We got the release this morning for one thirty-three. They didn't think they'd have it done. Whether they're permitted to be able to get it done, so it would be cleaner for my purposes because these were included in those memorandum of agreements. So we have two separate ones. We have one for one twenty-seven and one thirty-one. And then we just got the one thirty-three this morning. If you want to wait, that's fine. It's up to you guys.
Want to wait for?
To release one thirty-three.
Oh.
Because it wasn't specified on the agenda, so I told them I didn't normally do it or not. Because we only asked for one twenty-seven and one thirty-one.
Okay, so we just have
Okay, that's what I told them.
Just have the two in front of us then?
Yep, so it's for lots one twenty-seven and one thirty-one.
Work has been completed. No reason to hold the bond anymore.
We got the letter from Rob Maddox saying everything is good to go.
Okay. Just need a motion to release the bond. Move to release the bond. I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
And then just note for next time, you'll see one thirty-three.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that everything, finally, Johnny?
I mean, the only other Yeah, I think that's it because the other item that get moved right first, the school thing?
Yes.
Okay, to the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Ever referring to your, follow up on your discussion about school and whether or not you're gonna continue your policy of
Yeah.
Of course.
You guys will do all that.
I'll give them the important cover.
Sure.
Can I ask for a continuance?
The next thing we have on the agenda is items from the public. Is anyone in the body of the audience that would like to speak? Anything on the commission? Okay. I know that one shocks. Anyone online that cares to speak to the board today? Do you not see anything going on? So with that, we'll go to items from the commission. All right. I would indicate a motion adjourned. And we are adjourned. Commissioner Ewing, cut meal ready.